This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on the City Clerk, Iva Nelson, for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles here. Councilman Williams.
Here.
Worthy.
Here.
Eccles.
Here.
Billingsley.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to come forward and lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we just thank you for the blessings of life today. We thank you for your blessings on our great city. God, we thank you for the opportunity to share Thanksgiving in the past few days with family and friends. And we just continue to pray for those who are serving this country, in the military, all around the world, God, the men and women in uniform. Just pray your protection and blessing on them today. Be with our council today. Give them wisdom and knowledge in the decisions and choices that they'll make this morning that will affect this city. Thank you for everyone that's here representing their districts. Thank you for the mayor and his office, his administration. Pray your wisdom there. We will give you the praise and the glory for all the good things you're gonna do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on November 25th and the-
Second.
-and the Public Safety Committee meeting held on November 26th. We have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Comments? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will now entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the weeks of November 21st through the 27th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor.
Mr. Dates, would you come up, please? I think you're accepting this. Anybody that's with you wants to come, it's fine. Whereas World AIDS Day began on December 1st, 1988, with the goal of raising money, increasing awareness, fighting prejudice, and improving education about HIV/AIDS. World AIDS Day continues to be an important way to celebrate the extraordinary advances we have made in the battle against HIV and AIDS, and to remind Gadsden residents that people everywhere, that HIV has not gone away and that much more has to be done. Globally, more than 25 million people have died from AIDS, and more than 33 million people are living with HIV. Though the death rate from this disease is slowly declining, millions have died from the disease and millions more are still at risk. Every 9.5 minutes, someone in the U.S. is infected with HIV. Alabama has over 18,000 cumulative HIV/AIDS cases in the state since 1982, and estimated 3,000 Alabamians are HIV-positive and are unaware of their status. African-Americans are seven more times likely to become infected with HIV than non-African-Americans. Expanded access to HIV testing, diagnosis, and treatment can help reduce the suffering of this entirely preventable disease. The 2014 theme for World's- I'm sorry. For World AIDS Day is Focus, Partner, and Achieve: An AIDS-Free Generation, and it calls to remind us that we are striving for zero new HIV infections, zero discrimination, and zero AIDS-related deaths. Therefore, I, Sherman Guyton, the Mayor of the City of Gadsden, declare December 1st, 2014, as World AIDS Day in Gadsden, Alabama.
Good morning, council, and again to the mayor, thank you for the acknowledgement. Five years ago, I petitioned the council to observe National Black HIV/AIDS Awareness Day, and the request was honored. February 7th annually is set aside for the observance of the fastest-growing rate of infection, population of HIV, in the country. Today, we've made another historic move to acknowledge and honor those worldwide who are living and/or have succumbed to this dreadful disease. I thank you, Mayor Guyton, and this sitting council, for your bold step towards recognizing the need to raise public awareness for Gadsden, Etowah County, and the state of Alabama. Worldwide, since the epidemic began, we've lost over 35 million people. Our theme for this year, and particularly in the role that I now play for the state of Alabama as a peer mentor for Public Health Area 5, also supporting 6, is Know Your Status. Know, manage, and live. It's more than a motto. It's a formula for beating HIV and AIDS. Know your status. One in five Americans living with HIV doesn't even know that they have the disease. Manager health. Open and honest conversation about AIDS saves lives. Talk to your family. Talk to your physician. Talk to your partner. Talk about it. Talking about it can help you and those around you confront the issue and make the right decisions to live a healthier life. Be greater than AIDS. Live your best life. Take action so that you can live the best life possible. HIV begin one person at a time, and it will end one person at a time. Your best life is out there. It's time for us to live it. Today, we'll be celebrating World AIDS Day at the Gadsden Mall in conjunction with Premier Cinema from 2:00 to 6:00. I invite all of you to come out. If you haven't been tested, today is the good day for you to get tested so that you can know how you're living a healthy life. HIV will live in the body for up to 10 years before it even shows itself in some cases. So if you've ever had risky behavior in your sexual behavior, then you could be living with HIV and not know it. You could be me, five years ago, not knowing when I went to the doctor for the reason that I did, that it was HIV, and it turned out to be HIV and full-blown AIDS. But today, I'm living healthy because of the regimen that we have for me, and we want to help each and every one of you live healthy lives in the future. Thank you for your time.
Item number 8 is unfinished business. Item number 8A is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 110 Court Street in District 2. Last known owner is Mattie Thornton. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on October 28th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I couldn't let this one go. This has been an ongoing thing here. We tabled it 30 days ago. No activity. It was just, we just prolonged something that was gonna happen.
Any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 8B is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 127 Victory Street in District 2. Last known owners are Eloise Colfield, Elijah Thornton III, Eugene Latham, Carrie Thornton, and Kevin Thornton, with Eloise Colfield having a life estate. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on October 28th. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. If I'm not mistaken, this is one piece of property that y'all talked about upstairs and said that they was trying to sell it, and there was some- somebody was trying to buy this piece of property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. If that's correct, they still have time before we get it on the list and push it down. They still have time to sell this piece of property.
That's correct, and that's a very good point. Okay. Any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 9 is, this is the time and place, as advertised, to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1106 Vincent Avenue in District 1. Last known owners are the state of Alabama and Royce Chambers. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in March of last year. There've been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
This property is in District 1, and I haven't heard any one- no one has said anything to me concerning it, so I move to abate.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. This is not about this piece of property here. It's about some more properties in Alabama City in District 6. I got some calls this week. There was some vandalism on the street. I'd called the police department, and also, that was one night, a lady got her old gas stolen from the- she lived next door to a vacant house that'd been condemned, and also, too, the people next to next night, someone was sleeping on another condemned vacant house. And so these houses, the people's not gonna fix up. They're just an eyesore, and they're causing people to go in right now out of the cold and just sleeping in those things. And it's just creating problems. If you got a house, please fix it. If you don't wanna fix it, just let us push it down, because something's gotta be done with them.
Okay. Any more discussion? So we have a motion and a proper second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 106 Sixth Avenue East in District 2, state of Alabama, Leon F. Banks and Neil J. Banks being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started this case in July of last year. There've been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve, and today, we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Brian, can I ask you how many open condemned houses cases do we have in the city of Gadsden right now?
How many open cases? Approximately 225.
Okay. Can you maybe give us the percentage out of those 225? I know this is a guess. Out of those 225 that's condemned, what do you think, just in your guesstimation, would be that the people would bring those houses up to go? And since you've been here about 20 years, is that correct?
24 years.
Can you give us your estimate, about out of these 225, how many people that really would probably bring these houses up?
Less than 50% are actually abated by the owner, which requires us to step in. Now, we do have a rehab program. We have some other programs where we, you know, try to encourage the property owner to either give the property to the city or sell the property, but, you know, we actually ran some numbers that spent several years, but it's less than 50% that actually are abated by the owner.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1432 and 1434 Alabama Street in District 3, state of Alabama, and LaVell Stacy being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, this case involves a duplex. We started our case in February of last year. There've been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve, and today, we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Since this is my district, I haven't been contacted by anyone, so I move that we abate it.
Second.
Any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 2409 Norris Avenue in District 6, state of Alabama, John Stanley Morgan, and First Family Financial Services being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started this case in July of last year. There've been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. This house has probably been vacant or empty, and it's been eyesore to the Oak Park community for at least seven years. The picture shows nothing's been done to the house. No permits have been taken out. I think it's been over a year since, you know, anything's been done to the property. That weed you see growing up is poison oak right there and poison ivy. I get calls all the time about this piece of property. The neighbors want it gone.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 13 is a resolution authorizing amendment to agreement with Gadsden State Community College. This extends the current lease for soccer fields and adjacent areas for an additional year, expiring on December 31st of 2015. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. All this is just a lease of property for our soccer fields again. That's all this is.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 14 is a resolution authorizing change order number 2 for bid number 3251 for planning, resurfacing, and traffic striping on Forest Avenue from 7th to 12th Street. This is for all DOT material testing services, and the amount is $8,485.95. The revised contract amount with McCartney Construction is $250,788.35. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move that we adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business? Is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to ask for unanimous consent on the first reading that I appoint a lady by the name of Nisha Ann Gethoff to the Gadsden Waterworks Board.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
And I also would like to ask that we reappoint Ben Reed. I need unanimous consent on that from District 7 to the Water Board.
Checking.
Mr.- Mr. President, I think we'll have to back up there, correct, and vote on the first one we hear.
Well, it's actually the same resolution.
Oh, same resolution? Okay.
We actually did the whole resolution.
Second on that, then, if we didn't get a second.
Are you moving that we adopt-
Yes, I move that we adopt now.
And then Councilman Cannon, second.
We have a second. Okay. We have a motion to adopt and second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is that it? Okay. Mr. President, I have a resolution. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent and consider. It's appointing member, current council member Thomas Worthy to the Gadsden Etowah County EMA Executive Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Okay, I move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. This is- this appointment is made by virtue of being the chairman of the Public Safety Committee, and it is a very, very important committee, I want to state. Absolutely. And we're proud to have Thomas on it.
Any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business? Okay. Department reports, committees, boards. Okay.
Thank you, President Williams. I appreciate this. I'm Kay Moore. I'm director for downtown Gadsden, and you know, when you see me up here, something is usually going on downtown. So I want to invite everyone for the final, first Friday, December 5th, which is this Friday night. We're gonna have our North Pole stroll. This has become a tradition where we meet at the Pittman, and we encourage people to dress in their Christmas attire, whether it be Santa or Mrs. Santa. I think I'm gonna be a snowman this year. And stroll down from the Pittman to the lawn of City Hall and light our beautiful Christmas tree. The mayor will light the Christmas tree. It'll be about 5:30. We'll have hot chocolate there for the people who gather, as long as it lasts, and just we want you to just get in the holiday spirit. This is a great way to kick this off. And then we'll have a concert at the Pittman at 7:30. After we light the Christmas tree, you can stroll back up and do your shopping and your eating, and then we'll have a concert with the Liswood Project at the Pittman at 7:30. It's a free concert, but we're asking for a non-perishable food donation that we can give to the community food bank, because there are some that are not as in good shape as we are. So if you can bring a canned food or a non-perishable food to the concert, that would be great. It's gonna be from 7:30 to 9 o'clock. It's the Liswood Project, and you know, Joe Carricker is, I guess, the one that most people come to see. Joe is- he says he's 97 or 98. We're not sure, but we do hope that you'll come and see him and Liz and all the crew. They're really good. Jimmy Henderson, who was a city employee or retired and now works some part-time, is the drummer for that group. So he's a- it's a great, a great show, and everybody, I think, will enjoy that. So that's from 7:30 until 9 o'clock on Friday night, and then the next Saturday, December the 13th, we'll have snacks with Santa. We'll be at the Mary G. Harden Center for Cultural Arts, and Santa will be there. Bring your cameras and your children, and come enjoy milk and cookies with Santa from 10 to noon on December the 13th, Saturday morning. So a lot going on. Of course, the Christmas parade is next Monday night, the 8th, and that's the Kiwanis Christmas Parade, so that's always a lot of fun downtown, too. But please, come out and enjoy the music and the decorations and shopping with your local merchants, and support our downtown, and as always, we do need to remember the real reason for the season, and that's something that we don't need to let gloss over in all of this. But we invite you to come out Friday night, and then a week from Saturday, and then just enjoy- enjoy our downtown. We have a beautiful downtown, thanks to your support, and we do appreciate that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Kay.
Good morning. I'm Mike Hilton with the Public Works Department, City of Gadsden. I just wanted to give you guys an update on the leaf situation that we have here now. We currently have about 40 employees working on leaves as we speak. We have five pull-behind vacuum trucks and about 10 or 11, depending on what we've broken today, loader trucks that are picking up debris and leaves as they come. We do a regular rotation with those five leafers in addition with the loader trucks that we have out daily. They all five kind of stay in one area and move through the area before they go to another one. This week, we started in East Gadsden. Hopefully, we should finish that today. Moving from East Gadsden through Country Club, Clubview, back downtown through South Gadsden, Walnut Park, the Mill Village back up on the mountain, from the mountain down through Tuscaloosa Avenue area, working through North Gadsden, then starting back over in East Gadsden again. That's our general rotation. So as much leaves has been falling and the weather is being conducive as it is, as beautiful as it is, when it's, you know, sunny and 55, there's a lot of folks putting leaves out. Ask you guys to bear with us. We will get those things up just as quick as we can. We do ask the public, if they can, when they're putting the leaves out on the road, don't put them on top of an inlet, you know, the storm drain. Don't put them blocking your driveway pipe. Kind of put them in a place where, of course, we can get to them, but that it won't cause flooding if we do ever get any more rain. We want to keep that out there. If possible, when you're raking the leaves, if you can keep the leaves separated from your limbs and other debris, so that when the leaf truck comes by, they can vacuum those up. It does a little better job than the guy with the boom truck. We'll get them up either way, but if they're separated sometimes when the leafer comes by before the boom truck gets there, it just makes it a little easier on us, a little quicker to get those up. Just want to let you know that's where we were, and these guys, these men and women are working just as hard as they can getting these things up. Just bear with us, and we'll get them as quick as we can. Any questions? Yes, sir?
You are working overtime.
Right now, a good group of our workforce is part-time. We can't work those folks overtime. As we see the situation develop, we may work some Saturdays between now and Christmas if it gets to that point. Of course, with the long weekend that we've had, everyone being off Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, there's a lot more out there. Hopefully, by the end of this week, we'll have made a round with our loader trucks, we'll get a great number of this up, and then the leaf trucks circling behind there. So right now, we're not working a lot of overtime, but we are evaluating that situation daily. It could come in the future, yes, if it gets to that point. One quick point also, I just want to add, you guys, several abatements today. Councilman Cannon made some good points about these houses that have been there for a while. That's what we do also. We're the ones who go out and do the demolitions there. Bear in mind, on a good week, if the equipment's all running and we're not all picking up leaves, about one house a week is the max. That's about what we can get off the rolls. So when you're going through these, understand the more they stack up, of course, we'll get to them just as quick as we can. Johnny said he had one there, maybe 20 years old or seven years old, been there a long time. We get them as they come to us. As you guys abate those, they go on the list, and we work from the top down. Try not to jump around anymore than we have to. So just keep that in mind. It takes about a week to get it down, get it cleaned up, hauled away, and then starting on the next one. Keep that with you.
But Mike, also, too, you might want to tell them, if we don't ever get these on the list, they won't ever be pushed down.
Well, you know, they got to- if you call us and say, hey, there's a house been here on the- been needing to be abated for 20 years, but you guys haven't officially abated it, hadn't gone through that process, it may be 20 more. Has to go through you guys, through Brian, and through you guys first before it gets to us. But once it gets to us, it's coming down. It's just as we can work our way to it. Thanks, guys.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Always impressed that you don't have any notes to talk from when you walk up there. That's impressive. Impressive.
He was one of those persons that worked under me when I was out there. That's all I got to say.
Definitely want to hold that against him. All right. Remarks from the mayor and council? And we'll start on this then, with Councilman Reed?
Sure. I was just sitting here at Debrick thinking, I moved here in 1958, and there were in excess of 50,000 people. A lot of things have happened, but we had a lot of people to move, too. We've lost how much in population?
We've lost how much in population? And one of the biggest things in, in loss of population is housing. You gotta have housing. Brian does a good job. Most of these houses need to come down, I agree with you. But I would like to, to just start encouraging building and remodeling. I think it's very, very important. If we don't have a place for people to live, they're not gonna come here. They're not gonna stay here. They're moving every day. So that's the only thing I had. It just went through my mind that many years and I'm not that old. Bobby is, but I'm not. But anyway, I can remember that. That's all.
Councilman McKinnon?
Councilman Reed was absolutely right. We do need houses. I'll be the first to admit that, but you know, I've, I've been getting calls from people over in Walnut Park that they tried to buy houses and there's a condemned house next to them that's run down, an old burned house, and the bank just won't let them have any money. That's the whole bottom line, you know? The mayor won't give them the money that they need to because the house they live in's and they're trying to buy is a nice house and you got a burnt piece of property to lay next door to it that's run down. That hurts the value of yours you're gonna get. So I just, I don't know the solution, but I know if we don't get them on this list and try to force somebody's hand to fix these houses or do something to them, we're just gonna have a bunch of old houses sitting around that everybody and their grandma's trying to live in at night, you know? And when you have an old house like this, somebody's gonna start troubling them. I mean, that's the bottom line. If anybody else has got a better way, I'm open for suggestion. That's all I got.
Councilman Billings?
I'd just like to remind everybody that Saturday, Carver Re-invalidation Committee will have their Christmas parade Saturday. And inviting everybody out. That's all I have.
Councilman Worthy?
Well, I just wanted to say, we had a Public Safety Committee meeting Wednesday with all the record services, and I think we accomplished a lot. We're looking at tweaking the city ordinance. We'll meet with the chief and Mr. Anthony, Officer Anthony Davis and the city attorney to tweak the city ordinance. So I think we won't have this situation to arise again. So thank you so much.
I really wish you wouldn't say tweak. Last time we tweaked something, it turned out to be a mess, so. Councilman Ecker?
Man, I do remember when we were 60-something thousand. Now we're down in the 30s. I thought we had an answer, but I don't know what the answer is now. We just keep tearing down houses and tearing down houses. With only 30-something thousand, it used to be 60, there must've been 30,000 houses that needed to be. Are we getting to almost to that point now where we're doing that? However, if you don't do that, they turn into drug houses. People tear them up. We have a hard time rehabbing a house now in certain areas of the city because as fast as they rehab it, somebody goes in there and tears it up. And property owners are not too happy about fixing up a house that they know is gonna be torn down as soon as they get it fixed. I wish I knew the answer. I don't know the answer. We need a place where people can build on them and feel like it'd be safe in building it, but I don't know where that is.
Councilperson Tolls?
I would like to encourage the citizens of Gadsden to use the Gadsden facilities and the different things that we have in the city. I for one, at one time in Younger, used to say, there's nothing to do in Gadsden, but there's a lot to do in Gadsden. This morning, we went to the public library and there's so much going on at the public library that our children, adults, that everyone can use. So I encourage you, and eventually, one of my dreams is that we're gonna get something on the river. I'm talking to the mayor now. But that's a beautiful area and it can be built so that it can encourage people, not only the citizens, but others to come. So I encourage you to use the city of Gadsden. You say you pay taxes, so use the city of Gadsden. We have a lot to offer here. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, we, we expect to have the final approval on the permit from Federal Energy Regulatory Commission here pretty soon, so we'll start working on that. I, I would like to say I was made aware this morning, a few minutes ago, about the passing of one of our longtime city employees, Ms. Lily May Jones. She worked for us 52 years. She was always pleasant. She worked at, the first eight years she spent at City Hall, and then she moved to the Gadsden Public Library and, for the last 44 years. But she is a legend in our city, I assure you. We gave her a proclamation and declared Lily May Jones Day in Gadsden. And all the thousands of kids over those years that came to the library, they always would say, is Ms. Lily May there today? They were looking for her. And she was really a fine person and, and we're really sad about that. Judge Junkins, who went to work there in 1966, he says, everybody loved Lily May. Children grew up knowing Ms. Jones. She influenced many lives. I saw her kids grow up and she saw mine grow up. It was like a family atmosphere and you cannot work in a place and not be close to individuals. And he said, I feel so fortunate to know her. But keep her family in your thoughts and prayers. I don't know the exact date, but it's been recently, I heard. But she was quite a lady in our city. Thanks.
I forgot to announce my community meeting at Carver this Thursday at 5:30.
I did want to echo the point that was made by Councilwoman Tolls regarding the library. We did get a chance to meet with Ms. Amanda Jackson this morning, and Amanda does an outstanding job with the library. And we arguably have the best library in the state, and that's bar none. We, we have quite a bit of activity. She went through a litany of programs and activities that, that are funneled through that public library and, and I'm sure she left a number of items off of that, off of that list, just, just for the sake of time. But the big thing to remember about that library is, you know, there are a number of preschool readiness programs, a number of adult education programs. There's some things that I'm gonna mention to members of my family after that meeting this morning. There's some cultural programs, a number of different authors that are brought into the city to talk to our, our community. A lot of scholastic and academic programs, and, and these things cross socioeconomic boundaries, which is important because that's where the big gap is in, in our, in many of our programs. The programs exist, but they don't always meet the needs of some of, some of our people based on their socioeconomic situation. So again, just a number of good programs being offered there. At the risk of beating a dead horse with a stick, I'll, I'll also touch on the housing issue. And Brian, when I took office for the first time in 2010, Brian Harbison, who I, who I had known, you know, long before that, kind of gave me a, a tutorial on our housing stock. And it was important for me to hear that because I didn't realize before then just how antiquated. I think we all kind of, you know, look at it and can see it to some degree, but it's one thing to just kind of observe it and it's another thing to just be, be, have it confirmed. We have a very old, a very antiquated housing stock and it's been said by a number of people up here today. And that's a problem because as those houses get, become older, there's, there's, something has to be done. They either have to be, the nuisance issues have to be abated or those houses have to be rehabbed or remodeled. And what you're finding is that, you know, many of these properties that are the estates or that are a part of the estates of people who've moved on or passed on, just aren't being managed the way that they should. And they're not being maintained and up kept, and kept up the way that they should. And we just, you know, I think the numbers speak for themselves. 225 open cases. We're not building 225 homes. It's very clear. So that's a problem for us. What's the solution? I mean, I'm, I'm like a lot of these guys up here. I don't know what the solution is exactly, but I can tell you that, you know, part of where we, part of where we should start, of course, is to, to develop a comprehensive land use program. And part of that, of course, had, would speak to a residential component and gaining some level of input from the community in terms of, in terms of what we, what we think we can do with some of our available properties. And we've got to incentivize residential developers to want to come to Gadsden and build. And that's the, that's the key. You know, what's gonna drive them to want to build here? A lot of these places where we're tearing down homes, nobody has any interest in, interest in rebuilding. So, you know, I, I'm going, going into this detail because I want people to understand. It's, it's very easy to be critical of that process and, and call it out and state the obvious, but a solution is much, much more difficult. So, you know, if you have some, some ideas that you want to share, I think what you've heard today is that this council and the mayor is very open to, to what the community has to say about what they think. And we're particularly interested in what residential developers might have to say in terms of what a solution might be because, because again, I think that's where the rubber meets the road.
Okay. Do we have anything else? All right. There's nothing else to come before us. I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved. Second.[1764.62]